Let's call this meeting to order. Treasurer, could you take role?
Colonel O'Leary.
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here.
How present.
So stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is part of the meeting where we talk about our district goals. Every meeting, we go through our three goals and we talk about it. Everything on the agenda relates to those three goals. So the first goal is student achievement. The second goal is financial prudence. And the third one is community engagement. Those goals are sometimes, we have to balance those against each other, right? So sometimes, we want to do everything we can for student achievement, but we have to make sure we have the funds to do it. And, you know, a lot of times, we have to look at what we do with the funding. It'd be nice to like, you know, save money here, cut this, reduce this, you know, all kinds of things that come in, these suggestions. But we always have to measure those cost-saving measures on their cost benefit. What do they do to student achievement? And some of the emails that we get, and some of the times we hear, some things that seem like, well, the teachers make too much, so why don't we like, cut their pay? Well, if you've got, you can do that. But what's it going to do to student achievement, right? We've got some of the greatest teachers in the state working for us. When we put up a, when we put out an application for a position, we get two, 300 applications, right? So we get to pick from the best teachers anywhere, right? Other districts, they don't get those kinds of applications because they know that this is a great district to work for. So we constantly have to balance those two things off. And it's like a teeter totter. Where do we end up? What's the best solution as a board and as administration? That's what we do. We weigh those decisions. So we always have to be looking that way, and we're always thinking that way. So with that, I'll end that, and we'll move on with the recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. We do have a series of recognitions today for our students, our academics, and athletics. But first of all, we're going to start with Dr. Smithberger, who, if you'll join me, Mark at the podium. Well, first of all, I haven't shared this story with Mark, but, you know, we're here to recognize Mark for having the outstanding accomplishment of being named the 2019 Ohio Principal of the Year, which is phenomenal. The part that I haven't shared with Mark is, you know, if you saw, he was in the post recently for this recognition. And I actually have a cousin that lives in Strongsville, and she sent me a message saying, "Congratulations, Cameron. I'm so proud of you on your recent award." I said, "Yes, we look a little similar, but I did not win an award." I'm glad, appreciate it. But we're so proud of Mark and what he's done, not only for our kids and our district and our high school, but that he is so deserving of this recognition on a state level, and also, starting into the competition for the national level as well. And so, as one of his administrative colleagues wrote, "Our parents, teachers, and especially the students of Strongsville are lucky to have such a distinguished, caring, and supportive leader in our educational community. He is a leader who simply makes those around him better." And I couldn't agree more. And the last thing I do want to share before I let Mark say a few words is, you know, when we have jobs as superintendent or principal or whatever it may be, it is not just a personal decision, it's a family decision. So although they're not here tonight, I'd like to thank Lisa and Claire and Matthew for letting, you know, Lisa's husband and Matt and Claire's dad be with us so much, and be dedicated and take those nights away from home so he can make the students of Strongsville even better. So, on behalf of the Board of Education and entire school district, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
Dr. Rabbit, thank you for the kind words. I'm always uncomfortable in this kind of situation because I'd much rather be getting awards than people talking about things I do because it certainly is kind of uncomfortable for me. I am honored to be recognized. It's truly humbling to think that someone would think the work I do is worthy of recognition. But as I've said numerous times since I was recognized, it honestly is a high school recognition, it's district recognition. I work with great teachers. I work with great kids in the building, some of which are here tonight. You can see all the amazing things they do. So any success that I might have is a team effort. And it includes the central office staff. It includes our school board. And honestly, the community allows us to have success. So I am very gracious and honored to have the recognition, but certainly, I can't take it all on my own. And hopefully, I continue to work hard and hopefully do great things for the district. That's all I'm really up to. So, thank you.
And as Mark makes his way back to the podium, he will now lead us through the variety of recognitions of our students for this month.
And Mark, before we get into that, I just, I don't want you to get hooked that easily, being up there.
Yes.
But you're an incredible principal.
Thank you.
And a lot of us attend a lot of events. And I know, you're incredible during the day. And a lot of us come to a lot of events, and we see you every night. I mean, every night, you've got to be nearly every night. You're somewhere with, for this school district, representing our kids, making sure our kids are represented well, making sure that they're safe and learning and doing all the things they're supposed to do. So we appreciate your dedication, your commitment, and all the time that you put in. And it's a lot of time away from your family. So I echo what Cameron said, and just want to thank you, and thank your family. And we appreciate everything you give us, because you give us a lot.
Well, thank you so much. And I should've said this earlier. My family would've been here tonight. Unfortunately, Thursdays is ballet and soccer.
Ah.
So my wife is currently driving kids over, all over North Ohio right now to make sure they're at their rehearsals and their practices. So they send their condolences or regards for not being here. Now, role, I'm much more comfortable in recognizing our students. So I'll take my hat off and put a hat on. I like it a lot better. Tonight, I have the honor and privilege of being here to recognize our National Merit Scholar Program students. This is how that works. I want to just make sure we're aware of kind of how students get to be recognized. Each fall, about 1.6 million students nationwide take the SAT. Of that 1.6 million, the top 50,000 get recognized as part of the National Merit Scholar Program. That's around 3% for those of you that aren't quite as good as the students back here do the math in their head. So it's a huge honor to score in the top 3% of the country. And so, to be in the top 3%, that means you're a committed student. So at this time, I'd ask the students to come forward. I'd like to recognize the committed students. Then we'll talk about the actual finalists. So guys, can all of you guys come up, please? Would be great. If we can stand here, I will announce your name. I will hand you your, I have two different awards tonight, so I'll explain what you have. The National Merit Scholar Program actually sends a certificate, which you have framed, and then the school board gives you a certificate as well. So, I know not everyone can be here, but I am going to say your names because I think it's important to recognize the tremendous accomplishments. So our committed students. The first one is Saya Morton. Cole Van Treska. Cole is not here tonight? Lauren Sapienza. Saksha Krishna. Erin Horvath. I know she is not here this evening. And with us at this point, we have two National Merit finalists. So to be a finalist, you have to score in the top 16,000 in the country. From there, you have to do, go through the application process. So I'll talk about what that looks like. So after you score in the top 16,000, you have to complete the application, show your participation in school and community activities, demonstrate leadership ability, prove your academic record of success, meaning your transcript has to match that kind of achievement, be recommended by someone at your high school, write an essay, and earn an SAT score to confirm your student ability. These two students have done that. So they're in the top 15,000 people in the country who's taking the PSAT, which puts them beyond the top 1%. So that's worth giving some round of applause for. And our first National Merit finalist, Sharina Justini. And our second National Merit finalist is Ben Blickel. Ben Blickel is also this year's Phi Beta Kappa winner as the most academic student in the class of 2019. Ben, congratulations. Once again, congratulations to all the students. We are so proud of your outstanding accomplishments. As a school, as a high school, and therefore, a school district, we rank in the top 10% of the state of most students recognized for the Scholar Program. So it's a testament to what all of the work they've done and the community in general, that we produce high-level students on a consistent basis. So I believe this is the seventh year in a row we've been the top 10% of the state for our recognition for this program. I want to also congratulate our swimmers who are here before I go. And once again, thank you to the school board, and Dr. Reiba, and Mrs. Pelco, and Ms. Jang, and also two for your recognition with me this evening. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Denny Ziegler, Athletic Director of Strongsville High School, to move on to our athletic recognitions tonight. Denny?
Thank you guys very much for allowing this opportunity to recognize these student athletes. I will say, when I first started here, it was in the middle of the, you know, the winter sports season, and having the ability to go and watch these swimmers at the state meet, is something that I can honestly say that I am very proud of as one of my first few weeks on the job. One of the things I used to do, and I say "used to do", because, I'll tell you why in just a second, but I used to do an AD challenge, where I used to go into all of the sports programs, and I used to always have them give me a drill or something that they did, you know, during practice so I could just see if what they are learning and what I could do, if that was registering as to what we would do to improve our programs, make sure that we were moving forward. So one of the things I used to do was, I used to swim. And having done one down and back in a pool, I can say that I truly would never do it. It is a strenuous workout, and how these athletes do it day in and day out, and week in and week out. And for a lot of these athletes, it is multiple events in multiple days. It's truly an honor to see these student athletes compete at the state level. Before I introduce Coach Tom Stacy and the athletes, I want to just recognize Coach Stacy. It's now the fifth year in a row where he's been the conference coach of the year for girls' swimming. And that and that goes saying, he's got a great support staff, and he does an outstanding job, you know, with the student athletes, teaching them, training them, and getting them to believe in themselves and build that confidence, and making sure that they have the right skills to develop themselves as a student athlete. So at this time, I will bring up Coach Tom Stacy, and he will introduce the state swimmers.
Hi, thank you for having us again. When Denny was talking, he was saying day in, day out. For them, it's, a lot of times, it's morning in, night out. They swim in the morning, come to the high school, go back and swim in the afternoon, and it's always dark outside for them during the year, which is tough. And they can smell like chlorine all the time, too, which is even better. But they're extremely dedicated, hard-working kids. They do a very rigorous sport, that's for sure. Swimming, the state meet in Ohio is particularly challenging for swimming and diving. It's typically, the National Coaches Association ranks Ohio in the top five regularly. So some states take like 80 people, or they have cuts, or these things. These kids actually, they only take 24 in Ohio. And then, they have to do the time at a specific meet, which, for swimmers, in like college, you can qualify for the NCAA's from any time you go the whole year, right? They have to do what they do at a specific time. They have to hit at that time, which is very difficult. And they did that. They're state qualifiers. All three here, and then eight total. So I'd like to recognize them. We have some swimmers not here. There's lots of things going on, lots of family things. Some traveling, some have family commitments for other things tonight, so they can't be here. But I just, I'd like to recognize the fact that we're very fortunate in Strongsville with swimming, that we have such a great community, and it's so family-oriented, specifically with the schools. These kids have all started swimming in the Strongsville Summer, the Swim League, which, all over Strongsville and Development Pools, they have kids swimming in the summer. And then, the Rec Center also has a team that, for the people that don't have their own pool, they have a team there. So these kids started at a young age competing in that. And that's huge. It develops a sense of family, community, where they're together. And then they progress up. There's Swim Strongsville, Swim United, where they do some of them club on the way before they get to high school, because we don't have middle school programs. But I would say, and I think they would agree, I've known them since they were very young, and they've known each other for a very long time. And it's a real, again, a sense in Strongsville, and I know coaches from all over, where there's a real sense of community and a sense of family. And, you know, I feel it with them, especially this year. I really felt these kids, you know, they're part of my family. And I think that's really, truly special. And it leads to them being successful. So now, to talk about them. So first, I'd like to recognize Riley Mayberry. Riley is a sophomore. She qualified in the 200 medley relay, but very significant as a sophomore to be qualifying for our state meet, especially the Ohio State meet, which is so difficult to make. So congratulations, Riley. And I think with each of these kids here, it's also special. I talk about family, the recognitions for them, but their parents put a lot of hard work into, from the Strongsville Swim League, all three of these kids' parents, all the way through, they've been dedicated part of the community, a family involved, too. So her parents, Scott and Trish, have been very involved from a young age and have really helped her and lots of other people along. So I'd like to thank them as well. So thanks, Scott and Trish. Now, Chris Pichette. Chris Pichette's a senior. He qualified for the state meet as well this year in the 200 freestyle relay. Very impressive accomplishment. So I'd like to thank Chris and recognize him. And I'd like to thank Chris's mom, Sandy, as well. He had an older brother, so she's really, he's, she's been involved since I came to Strongsville. I met her at Bent Tree Pool in Strongsville, the first time I met her. So she's been very involved. And again, this is this family-oriented environment we have with swimming in the city. Like to thank Sandy for all her help over the years. Now, Andrew Arslanian. Andrew is a sophomore as well. He qualified in the 200 freestyle relay to the state meet. Again, as a sophomore, that especially, it's quite an accomplishment at a young age, and bright future, too, for the team with Andrew only a sophomore. So congratulations, Andrew. And then, I'd like to also thank Andrew's parents, Don and Jenny. They've been very involved in the community for years. Don has run the Strongsville Swim League at points. He's run Swim Strongsville, the USA Swim Team. He's even headed up the football league, though his sons haven't played football in high school. He's been very dedicated to the city and the whole kind of family environment. So thank you, Don and Jenny. And then, I'd just like to read through the other names because of all the hard work they put in and what they've accomplished, even though they're not here today. Jordan Hamoki, she's a sophomore. She qualified in the 200 medley relay, the 100 butterfly, and the 100 breaststroke. She was all Ohio in the 100 butterfly and 100 breaststroke. And she got a very difficult school record in the 100 breaststroke this year. And although we have to wait till the end of June, she's, she, I'm pretty, almost 100% certain she will be named All-American this year in the 100 breaststroke, which is quite an accomplishment, especially as a sophomore. So congratulations to Jordan Hamoki. Also, on the girls' medley relay team, Camille Merramy, also a sophomore, and junior Shaylan Gatt. So congratulations to them. And then, for the boys, on the 200 free relay with Chris and Andrew, we're sophomore Jayden Zaleski and senior Ian Cox. So once again, thank you very much for having us here to recognize these kids. I know you put a lot of hard work in, and you have a lot of other business at the meeting, but really, it's special to have them recognized. My first couple of years, I don't remember coming specifically to the meetings. And since that's happened, I really feel, with everything the kids do, that this is, this is something really special for them. So thank you.
Coach Stacy?
Yeah.
We want to thank you for all that you do, and the families and the kids who could choose to be with this kind of caliber. They could swim anywhere, and we want to thank them for being Mustangs. Thank you for choosing to be Mustangs, because you can choose to be whatever you'd want to be, right? But we're happy you're here. I remember having a conversation with Riley's dad, probably, he's back there, probably like, it went, you know, during the summer swim program. My daughter swam. She wasn't, she was just, she just did it for fun, right? She's not like these kids. And I remember asking him, I said, "Please, please be a Mustang." And he said, "He wouldn't swim for anybody but you, Coach." And he said, "My daughter's not swimming for anybody but you." So we want to thank you for being that kind of coach that these, this caliber kids want to swim for. So thank you very much for what you do for us. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to compliment Coach Stacy and tell a quick story, because he doesn't get to get away that easy. He spent a lot of time in his words, talking about how swimming is family and its community. That didn't just happen by itself. He had his father show him that example. And Swim United, you know, that might be the name on the check. That might be the name on the organization, but it's the Stacy family. And I'm very, I had the opportunity, I had the honor to see the award ceremony. And it is different, I think, than a lot of award ceremony. People look forward, what is Coach Stacy going to say about me this year? And it's always something positive. It's always something encouraging, and also something very personal. You know, none of the, none of the swimmers were just an athlete in the program. They were family. They meant, they meant something to every member of that swimming community, and that'll continue. Because Coach, you know, every time, he's like, I'm looking forward to seeing where that swimmer's going to be next year, whether it's college, whether it's five years. That family stays. And so, it's my habit to always say, "We're proud of you" whenever we recognize people. And it's one thing to say, "Coach Stacy, we're proud of you", but I know your father, Jim, is proud of you also, and I wanted to recognize you for that.
Before we go on to the superintendent's report, once again, congratulations to our students on their outstanding accomplishments, whether it be in the swimming pool, or academically, or Dr. Smithberger on a state level. We appreciate all that you do and how you represent our district, and we're proud of being a part of this together. At this time, any of our students and families that would like to continue their evening elsewhere other than hanging out at the board meeting, this would be a good time to go. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay as we continue on with the meeting.
Hey, Denny. Denny, stick around for one minute. So just one quick thing for Denny. I, Denny Ziegler, new AD. I was at, went on a visit to Bowling Green with my daughter last weekend, and I was, there was another gentleman there who had a Brunswick shirt on. I reluctantly said hi to him. And he said, "Hey, you know that new AD of yours is really on it." This is from a Brunswick guy. He goes, "I'm working on, with him, he was with a company, I think it was called AVM, but he said, 'We're working on real-time scoring on this, on a website that also will have the ability to raise money and funds on it.'" But it was just, I was just all the way in Bowling Green, and this guy's telling me what a great AD you are. So just keep up the good work, and thank you.
Great job.
Moving on to the superintendent's report to the community. As we've spent this early part of the meeting recognizing our students and their accomplishments, this just doesn't happen by chance. It happens by a partnership between our community, our wonderful parents and family, and our students, as well as our staff, that help to develop and support and guide our students' skills and talents and aspirations as they move throughout our school district. And in 20 days, our community is going to have a voice in what our school district will look like moving forward. And so, as we get closer to the May 7th election, I just wanted to share with the board and our community what we're trying to preserve. After 11, almost 12 years of being financially prudent with the tax dollars we're blessed with, we've come to a time where financially, due to state tax reductions, state funding reductions, local tax collection reductions, that we need the support. We've reduced, we've tightened our belt, we've sharpened our pencil, whatever analogy that we want to take a look at. We have done that, we can explain that. And if there's community members that would like to partner with us to look at how we can do that better, we welcome you to come in, to call, to attend board meetings, finance committee meetings, business advisory council meetings as we partner. But it's imperative that we continue to provide our students with the opportunities that they've currently had in our district and need for their future. Whether it be optimal class sizes, so they can get the individualized attention, small group intention, to have the success that they have in the classroom. Whether it be athletic opportunities at the middle school or extracurricular activities. Getting a strong education is not just about the four core areas and going to school from the time that it starts to the ends. It's what happens before in the swimming pool, or what happens afterwards. Student council, or key club, or the musical that just happened a few weeks ago, or the pep band, or marching band traveling to away games. It's about making sure not only our staff, but our kids have the resources that they need to be competitive, that we don't get behind. We can save money by delaying textbook adoptions, but all we're doing is kicking the can down the road for a problem that's going to continue to grow if we don't keep up with the replacement schedule that we have with new Chromebooks, with updated technology, and textbooks that we have. And most importantly, is our student safety. When we take a look at transportation, and we take a look at the limits that we have, where students are transported within a one-mile radius, and start extending that to one and a half for the middle school, and start eliminating busing for seniors and juniors, and doing zone busing for freshmen and sophomores, that's not putting our students in a spot where we want to put them in terms of safe transportation that we can provide as a district. But there are limitations. We have to make tough financial decisions, and that's what these are. We have expenditures that are exceeding our revenues. And so, we have already reduced $1.1 million. We're going to have to continue to reduce funds. And as I've shared before, and in multiple presentations, if we have to put in further reductions, it gets us one additional financial year of stability. It doesn't fix the problem. We need to come together with a pattern of reducing costs, as well as the community providing the financial support through this operating levy. And we've heard our committees, our community's feedback. We've reduced our operating levy to a lower amount that will give us the longest amount of financial stability, five additional years through the 26, 27 school year. We've changed it from a continuous to a limited levy, giving the community a voice every five years. For the average homeowner in Strongsville, based on the county valuation, it's a little over a dollar a day investing in an education for our students so that they can be on the path to have the opportunities, whether it be in career "an education for our students so that they can be on the path to have the opportunities, whether it be in career, college, or military, as they leave our school district." So, as we come 20 days before the election, we are making a decision that's going to impact the next 20 years of our district "because if these reductions have to be put into place, they are going to take a long period of time to recoup, as we've known from recent past and history "of what's occurred in past reductions that have had to be made in our district." So, I just encourage our community and our parents to be well-informed, um, to get the facts, to visit our website, to reach out to a board member, to me, um, to principals, to teachers, to hear what's going on and what the money's going to be used for and why it's a necessity, um, so that you can make an informed decision as you vote by absentee or go to the polls on May 7th. So, as you make that consideration, we've started, as absentee ballots have come in and people are casting those absentee ballots or looking more closely at the ballot language, I bring back a slide, uh, that I shared probably a month and a half ago. And that is how you determine your tax rate. Here's the question we continue to get, and if you look at that ballot language, it's that bold part, 59 cents for each hundred dollars evaluation. There's two points that we want to make sure our voters are well-informed in. First of all, you only pay tax on 35% of your valuation. That's where most people get confused. They're doing the math on the full valuation of their home and they're getting a big number. And they're saying, "Wait a second, I read in the Post or I read in the Sun that it's only going to cost this much. Where's the difference?" Take 35% of that total and that's where you're going to see the difference. So, that's the mo- most important thing, number one. The second most important thing is please remember that you are taxed on the county's valuation. You could go and Google Cuyahoga County My Place, look up your home, figure out the county valuation. That's what you're going to take 35% of, that's what you're going to multiply, um, or divide by 100 and multiply by 59 cents to figure out your tax rate. If you go to our website, there's a calculator right there. Type in your valuation, it will tell you exactly what it is going to be, uh, for your home value. But please remember, we want people to make informed factual decisions. 35% of your, uh, county valuation is what you pay taxes on. Um, and find your county valuation at the Cuyahoga County website, not by looking at Zillow or Realtor.com because that's a completely different figure. That's not used to determine your tax bill. So, I just wanted to update the community on those two items on the upcoming levy.
Thank you. For that, it brings us to public comment. We don't have any. Uh, approval of the minutes. We have the minutes for the February 21st and March 7th regular board meeting. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. I know we're almost done with lunch, so I want to make sure you get all your motions in.
It is Easter.
Yes. Um, any comments on the mo- on the minutes? George, could you take role?
Sure. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright. Brings us to the treasures report. Treasure?
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have three items for your consideration tonight. Uh, the first is the financial report for the month ending March 31st, 2019, which can be found in Exhibit A. Um, the amended appropriate, the amended permanent appropriations, which can be found in Exhibit B. And then Item C is for student services. That's for North Coast Therapy Associations, uh, or associate, North Coast Therapy Associates. And it's for our extended school year program, which runs through June and July, um, for our students with disabilities, which could be found in Exhibit C.
Thank you.
That, that concludes my report.
Thank you, George. Uh, that brings us to the superintendent's report. Timely information?
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Before I go to the agenda, just a couple of things on the slide that I wanted to share with, uh, the board and our community. Uh, first of all, once again, uh, we, we did a partnership with Where I'm From in the South Park Mall before. They've got a new T-shirt, a limited amount are available. Uh, as you can see, uh, the design is there. And all proceeds benefit 100%. So, the company donates, they pay for the T-shirts, they donate 100% of the proceeds, go back to the Strongsville Education Foundation, and that money comes directly back to the school district to pay and fund field trips. Um, so, we greatly appreciate our partnership with South Park Mall, with the owners of Where I'm From and with the foundation, um, who are funding, um, s- student field trips in select grade levels throughout the district. Um, also want to share, coming up on April 25th is a Family Science Night that's going to be at the high school from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. So, not only is there a great science fair and you can see the projects that our students are doing, but they've got interactive, um, events and exhibits and hands-on science work, uh, for students and kids of all ages. So, we encourage, um, family not only to see the outstanding work that our students are doing, but get involved, get involved with science and enjoy a fun night at the high school on the 25th. Um, also on, or moving on, on Sunday, August, or April 28th from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M., there will be a student and community rally, uh, at the center of town at the corner of 42 and 82. There's going to be family-friendly entertainment activities, um, so wear your green and white. There's been flyers that have been made and will be distributed shortly with more information. So, put on your calendar, uh, Sunday, April 28th, 4:00 to 6:00 P.M. on the commons, um, to join, uh, our community, uh, in support of our community and our school district. And finally, as we talked about, please, uh, remember to go out and vote, whether it's absentee or on Election Day. Um, and I did want to share, um, I've shared it with the board prior, um, but our buildings are open on Election Day. Um, and every polling location will have a police officer stationed there for added security. So, Chief Fender and I have worked, um, worked on that and, uh, so please, uh, and I'll share that in an email with all of our parents. But although we're open and yes, we have voting in the buildings, we will have a Strongsville police officer at every building "to, uh, monitor and manage the voting, uh, as our schools are in session." Moving on to the agenda, a few items, um, for your consideration.
Cameron?
Yes.
What's it on that rally? I mean, there's, we're supposed to, we're going to have food there, they're going to have, we're trying to line up some bouncy trucks, we're going to have, um, the band's going to be there. Um, I think it's going to be face painting. We're going to do all kinds of fun things. So, it is going to be a pretty fun event. Uh, we'd love to see as many people show up as we possibly can get there. It'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Uh, the first item is an educational service, our Service Center of Cuyahoga County Primary Service Agreement. Be it resolved, uh, that we enter into a two-year agreement with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County to implement "county services listed in the exhibit in O R C for the school years 2019, 20 and 2021, "beginning July 1st of 19 and running through June 30th of 2021, as can be found in Exhibit D." Number two, um, is our annual membership with the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Be it resolved, uh, that we, that authorization is given for the 1920 school year. Membership requires that Strongsville City Schools conduct their athletic programs in, in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, business rules, interpretations and rulings of the OHSAA, and there is no cost to the district. And finally, approval of a tuition, a student. Be it resolved, the recommendation that Nikitha Yadavali be accepted as a tuition student at Strongsville High School "for the 1920 school year per board policy at the rate of tuition set by the state." Let me just clarify, um, that by law, students are able to pay tuition, full tuition, to attend a public school that they may not be in residence of. Uh, it's, therefore, it's in board policy. We do not set the tuition rate. The state sets the tuition rate. Um, and if a family agrees to pay that tuition rate, they have a right to attend the school district. And that tuition rate needs to be paid in one check in full before the school year starts. So, um, this family, uh, has requested that and we are following law and policy, um, to do that and they know the requirements, uh, that are needed. Um, so, this is, uh, what's there for your consideration.
Um, Cameron, are you permitted to tell us what grade level this student is in or is that?
Yeah, I-
Secondary, primary?
They're, they're high school.
Okay.
So, they are, they are a student that would be returning to our district that has moved residence and would like to finish their high school career in our district.
Alright, thank you.
And it's quite expensive.
It is. Uh, this year, it's like 11,400 and something?
Yeah, it's around, it's around 11,000, 11,400, somewhere around that number. And it's how the calculation works. It's our, the state looks at our revenues and divides it by enrollment, so they look at, um, that figure. And it gets published at the end of July, beginning of August is when we'll get the tuition rate for the next school year.
That ends timely information, um, and I asked, uh, Operations Manager Steve Brechner to come up, uh, to share his report for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, couple of items under Business Services. Uh, the first is a resolution of intent to participate in winter use contract for the Ohio Department of Education, or ODOT, "the cooperative purchasing program for sodium chloride, which is rock salt." The resolution just allows us to enter into that agreement and to utilize the pricing that ODOT gets for the rock salt. That's, uh, in Exhibit E. The second item are the gifts that were given to the district. Uh, the VFW Strongsville Post 3345 donated a four-by, a four-foot by six-foot American flag, valued at $30 for the use at Strongsville Schools Administrative Offices. Chick-fil-A donated a 200-count tray of chicken nuggets and gift cards totaling $45 for the district's Family Literacy Night. Raising Canes donated 600 kids meals to be used as part of a book reading program incentive tied into the district's Family Literacy Night. Giant Eagle Market District donated two $25 gift cards for the district's Family Literacy Night. Costco donated a $25 gift card for the district's Family Literacy Night. Erin Sullivan Lally donated $120 to pay for the trainer fee and half of the pay to participate fee for a student in need. Brand Muscle Inc. donated $582.50 to the Strongsville High School Track Fund for T-shirt sponsorship. And Vitamix donated $500 to the Strongsville High School Engineering Club.
Excellent.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next up is Erin Green, our curriculum director, with her report for the month.
Thank you. I have just one item tonight under curriculum, and this is for our Deaf Interpretive Services Field Experience. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following student shall be placed for the purpose of field experience. We have a student from Cuyahoga Community College to be placed at Maraski Elementary School from April 19th through May 31st, 2019.
Thank you, Erin. Andy Trio, Director of Student Services with his report. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I have one item for your consideration and that is extended school year program for students with disabilities from the general fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the extended school year program for school age or preschool students with disabilities "at Strongsville Middle School. For the session listed below, the dates are June 18th through July 25th." Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Andy. Um, and next, Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with our Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Good evening. Under Human Resources, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, I have certificated, uh, reductions in force due to our Phase 1 reductions. Uh, under, continuing under E1, reductions in force for our non-certificated staff. Under E2, the resignation of non-certificated staff member. Under E3, we have the retirement of our certificated staff and we'll recognize our retirees in May. We also have-
It won't be the same without Mrs. Dodash.
Correct. She's, yeah, she's great. Uh, we, we have retirements for non-certificated staff. Under E4, appointments for certificated substitutes. Appointments for certificated, uh, paid-upon completion supplementals. I do need to remove head, uh, football cheerleading coach, S H S, as we'll have a separate vote for that. Continuing under E4, appointments for certificated staff and appointments for non-certificated, uh, staff. Appointment for our 2019 summer school coordinator. Under E5, stipend for kindergarten early entrance screening. Under E6, winter 2019 athletic, uh, tournament for girls' basketball. Under E7, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E8, change in status for certificated staff. Changes in status for certificated staff reductions in force. Changes in status for non-certificated staff reductions in force. Under E9, change in title for non-certificated staff. Under E10, uh, certificated staff job share approval. Under E11, medical leave for one administrator. And continuing medical leaves for certificated and non-certificated staff. Under E12, unpaid medical leaves for certificated staff, unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff members. And under E13, we have volunteer chaperones and mentors, as well as one, um, one gentleman for a volunteer sport. And then continuing, uh, we have the addendum under Human Resources, E4, the appointment of a certificated, uh, staff member. Um, and this will be for head, uh, football cheerleading coach for S H S, and this does require a vote.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First by George, second by Duke. Uh, any discussion? George, take role.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
No.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
I do have one question for Jenny. Um, who is covering for Susan Harbaugh? She's out at the high school.
Yeah, we, uh, we called, uh, Mr. Tom Karas back. Uh, he was assistant principal at, at the high school and, uh, he is very helpful and, and willing to come back and help us out. So, actually, um, Susan has returned, um, now, and so, uh, we thank him for helping us out.
Okay, so she's not still on FMLA until May the 3rd?
No, that was just changed recently. So, she came back early.
Okay.
There is no technology report for the month, so that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Neso?
Thank you. Alright, so where we at here? Technology. That brings us to report. I'm Polaris. Richard?
Uh, I have a, uh, two shout-outs. Um, I'd like to congratulate Cole Joniak and I'd like to congratulate, uh, Ally Maniac. Uh, both of them were inducted into the Career Tech National Honor Society just recently. So, we're very proud of them and, uh, we extend our congratulations and, and thank them for their leadership and, uh, being a good example to their classmates. And then it's also, uh, a distinct, uh, honor to announce that, uh, earlier today, the Polaris Board met, uh, this morning "and we are, uh, ready to announce that we have a new Assistant Superintendent. Uh, Mr. Mike Shepherd has, uh, accepted the position of Assistant Superintendent. Uh, Mike is currently the Superintendent of the Berea School District. Um, and he will complete, uh, the year in Berea and then starting next year, he'll be the Assistant Superintendent at Polaris. It's a really exciting time for Polaris. The, uh, 50 million, 50-plus million dollar, uh, renovation is nearing its completion "and we're, uh, ready to start the second phase and, uh, make sure that Polaris stays in, in what is my opinion, the premier career tech vocational school in the state. And we want to maintain that leadership and continue to provide high school and adult learners, uh, career technical education. So, we're very excited to have, uh, Mike come on board."
It's quite a catch.
Yes, it is.
Now, you want to move on to legislation?
I will. Um, you know, as we're discussing our levy, uh, at the state level, we continue to discuss the, uh, um, the biennium budget that's being, uh, debated "uh, in the state legislature. And it was, uh, a news article was announced, uh, yesterday or today. Um, Larry Householder is, uh, publicly stating that the education, uh, portion, the Cup Patterson Report, all of that "will probably not be completed as part of the biennium budget. It'll probably be done after the biennium budget." Uh, Governor Dewine has, uh, proposed a $550 million, uh, expansion of education funding. The Cup Patterson Report is, uh, north of $1 billion, uh, if you would follow all the recommendations. And, uh, Householder has said he is uncomfortable with, uh, the impact on urban and poor, per, poor rural districts "and how the Cup Patterson, uh, proposal affects them. So, I don't, you know, a lot of times when we're discussing our levy, a lot of times when we're discussing education funding in general, we keep on waiting for a fix "and that fix keeps on getting kicked down the road, um, which, you know, I think we need, uh, as a community, make sure to contact, uh, State Senator Matt Dolan "and our House Representative Tom, Tom Patton and let them know that, you know, regardless, uh, Strongsville continues to send money south and we don't get as much money back. So, I wouldn't hope, I wouldn't hope on any, uh, help from Columbus anytime soon. Uh, our, our education in Strongsville will depend on us as a community and, uh, it's another reason why that May 7th levy is so important. And I, I, uh, want to remind the community that that May 7th levy, all of that money stays in Strongsville and it can't go anywhere but Strongsville. So, please vote your conscience. And that concludes my report.
Um, Jane?
Okay.
Jane or George, City Council?
Um, City Council, they had a meeting last Monday and I'd like to welcome Matt Patton is here with us tonight. Thank you for attending. Uh, a few things of note is, um, they are finishing out- A few things of note is they are finishing out the park at Sarar Park, for those of you that live north. So, that's going to be getting a little zip line and some other additional equipment at the park up there, so you'll have to go and visit that this summer. They also, this month is National Child Abuse Prevention Month for the month of April. So, if you see the clock tower is illuminated blue, that is the color of Child Abuse Prevention Month, so. The, also, we appointed another fire lieutenant, David Boyle, who was a Strongsville High School grad. So, welcome to the city again in the capacity of a firefighter, so. That concludes City Council.
Want to move on to PTA?
I did not attend PTA, George.
Neither did I.
I know the Dare Dance is our coming up.
Laura's here. I'll find it.
Well, we'll, we'll catch up on that one.
Yeah.
Unless there's something, Laura Hausum's in the audience today, so she's big in the PTA, runs the PTA. Anything we should mention that you can think of?
No, this last meeting was our council meeting. We just had a meeting that night, so we really don't have another council meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Teacher Appreciation Week's coming up in May. That's about all. They're gearing up for that and some schools usually go all out for that.
April 26th, the Dare Dance is happening at, is it Mashad's?
At Mashad's.
At Mashad's from 6:00 to 9:00. And then Rockin' at the Rec. We just had one, correct?
And they're done for the year.
Okay, so it's the Dare Dance on the 26th from 6:00 to 9:00.
Excellent. All right, Student Achievement, Jane?
Oh, great. This is an exciting one this month. I recently met with the STEM teachers, the Science, Technology, Engineering and Math team at the Strongsville Middle School. This is also known as Project Lead the Way, Gateway to Technology, and it's a team of teachers that consists of Ms. Gasparo, Ms. DeLonge and Ms. Behenna. And they were really excited to have me come in to see their classroom and, and to learn about what they're doing. And their enthusiasm, I'm sure, is contagious for the students to really get involved with what they're doing. They mentioned to me that this generation that's in school now is often called the Lego Generation. And by what that means is they're able to follow directions really well, so they can put together this masterpiece that's carefully planned for them according to the Lego instructions. However, that's not the skill that's most desired by our companies that are hiring today. So, they want people that can problem solve and have critical thinking skills. So, this program really is trying to teach them how to have problem-solving capabilities and to work in groups. So, while they're given a problem to solve and they certainly hope that they come up with a solution, it's more about the process of how to solve a problem that they're teaching. And one interesting thing, they've also started a Gems Club, which girls, engineering, math and science, and they meet after school and they delve deeper into topics and they have a theme every meeting, like the Bungie Barbie Challenge. They dissect a sheep's kidney and heart to learn about science. They use power tools and they made a dry erase board and they had an adaptive toy switch night. Then they had a CSI crimes night where they had a blood spatter come, person come in and tell them all about that. So, it really gets kids excited about science and think, wow, maybe this is a career I want to go into. And it's also interesting to note that they were just received the PLTW, the Project Lead the Way Distinguished District Recognition for an exemplary program. And only 31 schools across the nation received this award. So, I'd like to congratulate that and hundreds of schools were considered, so congratulations and thank you for letting me spend a few hours with you.
Excellent, thank you. That brings us to committee reports and I, there wasn't a Finance Committee meeting. I don't believe there was a Policy Committee meeting because I didn't hear any cheering or hollering or anything fun like that. Facilities Committee meeting, nope. And the Business Advisor Committee, no. So, all those, you know, what I'd like on future agendas, could we, when we show the committee, could we show the next meeting date if there's one set?
Sure.
That way we could, we could read those off because they're all public meetings and that way we can invite people to attend and we'll have that on our fingertips. With that-
Regarding the Education Foundation, Jockeys and Jullops is at the Rec Center, the senior side, and it is May 4th. So, if, get your big hats out, get your bow ties out, have some fun and, and join us.
Excellent.
Mr. Naiso?
Yes, sir.
We do have a Finance Committee meeting coming up on April 29th, but we do have to cancel and reschedule it due to, due to conflict with-
Never mind.
With most of us attending.
Yes.
Another meeting.
Yeah, we're all telling them. We'll, we'll find out what the date of that is. And there's a technology meeting or what was the, what's the meeting that's in the morning coming up?
We have a, the Business Advisory Council's on Friday, April 26th.
Friday, April 26th. Okay, excellent, so many meetings. All right, great. Well, that, that brings us to Consent Calendar. Do have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Richard, all items marked with an asterisk are approved in one vote. We do have one modification, item 10E4, that was voted on separately. And it, other than that, does anybody have any discussion on any of the items that are marked with an asterisk? No? All right, George, can you take roll?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naiso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. All right. That brings us to sixth team, which is Board of Vacation Other, Board of Education slash Other.
I have one. I'd like to thank the VFW for supplying the flags for our schools when they get worn. Yeah, I looked at the one that's out in front of the building and it's really nice because it's brand new and I, I appreciate everybody that flies a flag as a veteran out in front of their house or their business. I would ask you to please check them since it's now spring and there, some of them are in pretty bad shape and there are proper ways to dispose of flags that you should comply with. I know that there's special mailboxes around that say for disposal of flags. I think there's one on the Freedom Trail and there's one at the VFW post and you can put your flags in there and we'll take care of it properly. And take a look at them because a lot of them are pretty shabby. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
I've got one. Last Friday, Cameron, myself and Jenny, we attended the Connections Lunch. Mr. Rodak does a wonderful job with some kids who just don't have direction or some kids who just don't have two parents or some kids who just get themselves in trouble. There were a number of children there that had perfect attendance. There were a number of children there that they started in Rodak's class or they came out of middle school with a 1.5 GPA and some of those kids are sporting 3.5s right now because Rodak takes the time to understand the children, find out what direction they're going in and kind of change it a little bit. Take the time to settle them down, get them to just do their homework, right? Just the small things. And I've been a big fan of Mr. Rodak. Strongsville Rotary supports that class, supports that entire event and we just, I'm very proud of what Mike does with those children. He brings some kids from the basement to the third floor and he, he deserves some recognition for that and he's just done a wonderful, wonderful job with some of those kids. And it was, it was funny because there was a group of boys that were sitting behind me and Rodak always had an eye on those kids and just was staring at them the entire time and they behaved. They behaved, so I just, I'm very, we're very lucky to have a person like that in our school district. We're very lucky to have somebody in that Connections program that can, that can help some children. So, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I do. On Tuesday, I had the pleasure of attending the Strongsville Chamber of Commerce Lunch in which we have the Strongsville High School's Distinguished Alumni Program. I'm gonna, I promise I'll be good. And so, I'd like to thank Dan Faust for partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to make that happen. And our recipients this year of distinguished alumni were Jane Swiger, who is retired teacher, who, any of you that have met Jane, she's just infectious with her energy and her zeal for all things Strongsville. And then Paul Sidoti, who was a class of 1989, gave such a glowing tribute to what the music program in our district made in his life and he's the lead guitarist for Taylor Swift. So, he credited all the way back to first grade, his teacher recognizing that he had something special. And he just couldn't say enough about Ken Mahalco and David Harbart and just encouraging him and recognizing that he had a special talent and the eighth grade talent show at Albion Middle School. So, it was really touching that even after all these years and he's coming up on his 30th reunion, that Strongsville really does hold a strong place in his heart. So, I hope we can keep the arts going in Strongsville, so that's something that this levy vote definitely could impact, so I just wanted to highlight that. It was a very nice afternoon and he was very gracious and Jane was funny and I didn't know our colors used to be yellow and purple, but that was humorous, but. So, that's the Chamber, Strongsville High School Distinguished Alumni. And if you go to the high school, in the main hallway, they have plaques with the portraits of all of the prior year's recipients. So, if you have a moment, take a time to just look and see. I mean, we have such an array of distinguished alumni from our school, so. Another thing I want to bring up is May 18th, the Strongsville Historical Society is having a vintage wedding show and dessert. It's going to be at the Methodist Church. Tickets are $35 with all the proceeds going to benefit the Historical Society to maintain the village there. So, if you'd like to have a nice afternoon off, it's from 2:00 to 4:00 on May 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is I just wanted to thank all the teachers from this district. They do an outstanding job. We're coming down to the end of the year, there's a lot of testing going on, a lot of pressure on the kids, a lot of pressure on the teachers, and we just have outstanding teachers. And I know Teacher Appreciation Week's coming up during all that, but we shouldn't have a special day to have to thank the people who are doing such an outstanding job with our students. And so, thank you for everything you do every, every day. With that, we'll move on to meeting notification. We have a meeting, regular session on Thursday, May 2nd, at 7 o'clock right here. And then we have another meeting on Thursday, May 16th, in the auditorium of the high school. So, our, our May 16th meeting will be at the high school. With that, we do have a need for executive session.
To consider the compensation of a public employer official.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion? No? George, can you take roll?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naiso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Enter an executive session at?
Eight, 10?
Eight, 10?
Yeah. Have you want to have any business? Happy Easter, happy Passover to all, to all of Strongsville and, and the world. It's a great, great couple of days, so, thank you.